I'd like to call to order the November fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, meeting of the Woburn Planning Board. We could have roll call, please.
Mr. Kevin Donovan.
Yeah.
Mr. Bob Doherty.
Here.
Ms. Claudia Bulgan.
Here.
Mr. Jim Callahan.
Here.
Mr. Michael Ventruska. Mr. Dave Edmonds. Chair Carolyn Turner.
Here. First up under subdivision approval not required plans, I believe there are none this evening. Is that correct, Tina?
That's correct. There are none.
Thank you. Under subdivisions, first we have twenty-four Flag Street discussion and decision on definitive subdivision plan. Applicant George Gately, Jr.
Yes, Madam Chairman and members of the board, just to refresh your memory, the Planning Board closed the public hearing on this application at its meeting on September twenty-sixth. After it closed the hearing and had a discussion, and at the end of the discussion, there were a couple of issues needing resolution prior to a final vote of the board. And the issues that were raised were, number one, two encroachments that exist within the Flag Street right-of-way. One was a utility pole, which Mr. Gately said he could move by some distance, but wasn't specific. And the second encroachment was the existence of a carport related to another property not on the lot being subdivided, which further narrowed the right-of-way. The third issue that was raised at the meeting was request that the mature trees on the property be shown on a plan and provided to the Planning Board. The matter was originally scheduled to be brought up again for discussion and a decision at the October tenth meeting, but that discussion was postponed at the time to allow for some additional work relative to those outstanding issues. Since that evening, we have in fact received or are about to receive, I understand, a plan that shows, in fact, you have it in front of you, we've received a plan that showed the mature trees on site. A portion of that sheet is shown on the screen, and it notes trees on the property, seems to be the smallest caliber is twelve inches. I think the largest tree I noted was twenty inches. So, the plan shows existing trees. The questions would be, number one, how many of those can be preserved through construction? And the second piece of that would be, once preserved through construction, is there something the Board can and should do to ensure their preservation beyond that through ownership of potentially multiple ownerships? So, we were scheduled here, now here this evening, to continue that discussion and to hear an update, perhaps, from Attorney Tarby.
Thank you. Attorney Tarby.
Since the last meeting, Mr. Gately has looked into relocating both of those items, and he feels confident that he'll be able to do that. And, number two, we did submit the plans to the Planning Director, and we did receive a request from the Planning Director to preserve certain trees on the site. Mr. Gately was not available today, nor is he available this evening, and we wanted to continue the deliberations to the next meeting so that Mr. Gately could meet with the Planning Director, review the trees that are proposed to be preserved, and, you know, come to some type of an agreement on that. We did file a request late this afternoon to that effect.
A couple of things in that regard, and I apologize, I'm glad you mentioned, Mr. Tarby. Obviously, when I received the plan that showed the trees, I tried to, took a first pass at trying to identify the trees that seemed to be outside of grading and where the houses would be. But, I wasn't able to speak directly with Mr. Gately to determine whether, in fact, some of those trees or all of them could remain through construction. And I also understand there may be one or two trees where there's actually been discussion within a butter who would prefer to have one or two of the trees be removed. I don't know where those might be, but that's also part of the mix. So, I apologize for not having said that upfront. I do have a, as Mr. Tarby just mentioned, he did file a request this afternoon asking that further discussion and a decision be tabled to the next meeting to allow Mr. Gately to be present. And, the extension, if it were accepted by the Board, would extend the timeframe for action on this matter to November thirtieth. Your next meeting is on the twenty-eighth, and the time for action on this project actually runs out on the twenty-fifth. So, we would need an extension of time in order to get beyond the next meeting on November twentieth.
And we have submitted that.
And they've submitted it.
With respect to Mr., the request from the abutter to Mr. Gately regarding the other two trees, has there been any discussion? Have you been involved in any of those discussions? Or was there any update?
No.
Or has he expressed any willingness to work with that abutter and/or consider the request?
Oh, yes. Mr. Gately's expressed two things, a willingness to work with that particular abutter, but also, in fact, to preserve the mature trees. It wasn't that he objected, it was just that I think some of the trees I had indicated on the plan as the first pass, he might know that some of those are not probably ones that he's going to be able to save. So, we need to talk about the details of which trees. But, he is willing to preserve some. He just may not be able to preserve all that I showed on that plan.
With respect to the issue of the carport and the pole, what information did you get from the city solicitor as to the new information relating to these items being submitted at some future point when we've closed the public hearing already?
With respect to the issue of the utility pole, Mr. Gately had indicated that he could and would be willing to relocate that utility pole. The question is the extent to which or how far he can move it. It would be more in the way of clarifying information, and similarly, let me just stop for a minute with respect to the carport. My understanding is that he, Mr. Gately, may be able to negotiate with the person that owns it its removal. So, if it is removed from the right-of-way, it would be a condition that you would know of prior to the vote, as I understand it. Mr. Tarby, do you know anything about the timing of the carport removal? And when that would happen, if it happens?
We'd probably, we'd probably make it a voluntary condition to the Planning Board if it sees fit to approve this plan. We obviously doesn't want to spend the money to do it now, not knowing whether or not it has approval. But, we would make it a agreed-upon condition, if you will, if the Board.
And similarly with the utility pole, the Planning Board could impose a condition saying that in order to approve the project, one of the conditions is that the utility pole be removed outside of the right-of-way.
All right. So, basically, there is not a problem with accepting new information on those issues?
No.
Okay.
They're clarification-type.
All right. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the Board? Thank you, Mr. Tarby. Do any of the Board members have any further comments? Any discussion at this time regarding any of the outstanding issues or potential conditions or consideration at this time? Yes, Claudia.
I thought that the way Tina presented the staff report was, was thought-provoking. And what she said is, well, is this the way we as a Board want to see subdivisions develop in this city with regard to the waivers that were granted by us in two prior subdivisions and essentially are being requested in this one? Or not? And I thought that was certainly an issue that I've been wrestling with. And Tina, I appreciate you putting it in that way so that everyone can really think about, you know, this project and then as well as, you know, what's going to happen in the future. We've already been, had quoted to us several times, the Downs Court subdivision. And, one would think that if we approved this one, we would get more of that in spades. And so, what Tina is attempting, I think, to just make clear is, once we do Downs Court, okay, and then we do Baker's Way, okay, and then we do this one, you know, it would be reasonable for developers to then think, well, these sorts of waivers are perfectly acceptable in Woburn, and we feel, you know, that we're likely to get them, and we're going to keep on delivering them. And that's something that concerns me. So, I don't, I haven't made up my mind yet on this proposal, but I just want it out there that I am concerned about this, that, you know, this sort of waiver of subdivision rules should certainly be a project-by-project basis, but our willingness to waive them, you know, over and over again, you know, I think we need, as a Board, to look at that and to decide whether that's appropriate for our city. So, I'm wrestling with that currently. I just want to be very upfront that that is the case on this project. Thank you.
Anything further from any of the Board members? Well, at this point, our decision is whether there will be a motion to continue or...
It would be a motion to do two things, to accept the extension of time that's been provided or offered, to extend the timeline for a decision on this project to November thirtieth, and then to table discussion and a decision on the matter to the Board's November twenty-eighth meeting.
Motion.
On the extension of time.
Motion by Jim, second by Bob, to the extension of time. All those in favor? Five-zero carries.
I will make a motion to table this to the November twenty-eighth meeting.
Motion to table the matter to the November twenty-eighth meeting made by Bob, second by Jim. All those in favor? Five-zero.
I wanted to, if it is appropriate, I wanted to thank the people. There are a lot of people that are here in the audience tonight from the Flag Street neighborhood, many of whom have been here for every meeting that we've had on this, including the ones where we did continuances earlier. I know that it can be frustrating to come out night after night to meetings like this. I know you're anxious for a decision to be made. Like, the Board, I don't want to speak for all of them, but I know personally the reason why I'm, if I'm, I'm glad's not the right word, but I think it's wise to spend a little more time on the tree issue. We've had other projects where we've grappled with the issue of trees on site, and we've worded conditions in different ways in different projects. We're trying to make sure that we get it right and accurate. There's no guarantee that the Planning Board would approve this project, none at all. They may turn this project down, but if they decide, as a Board, to approve it, we've got to make sure that we have all the right information and that we've worded the conditions properly and cited the right plan. So, again, I'm sorry that you came out for a very short meeting tonight, but we're grateful for your participation, and we hope you don't get discouraged and that you are able to attend our next meeting two weeks from tonight.
Thank you.
May I ask a couple of questions?
No.
Sir, this is not, this is a matter that's not scheduled for a public hearing, so at this time, you're not able to address the Board.
We got a specific information, and then you closed the public hearing, and then you said you didn't have...
Sir, if I may, I'll have to stop you at this point. It's not a matter that's scheduled for a public hearing, so we're not able to entertain your comments at this time.
Is there a way to reopen the, reopen the public hearing?
It is not. We closed the public hearing in September twenty-ninth, I believe. September twenty-sixth.
There's no leaders, and we got to reopen a public hearing, but he can keep postponing you guys on voting on it.
The public hearing has been closed at this time, and the matter is still open for discussion amongst the Board members. And it will continue to the October, to the, excuse me, November twenty-eighth meeting, and certainly you are welcome to attend that meeting as well.
Could I just get the name of who's the...
That may be information that you could...
Why don't you give a call to the office tomorrow? We can provide you if we have a name of whatever person you'd like, and if we have it, we'd be happy to share it with you.
What would the office solicitor just told you that you couldn't accept my paperwork after you...
Sir, if I may, you can, you can call the Planning Department tomorrow directly and speak with Ms. Cassidy, and she'll give you the information requesting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, under public hearings, on zoning text and zoning map amendments, the first public hearing scheduled is a continued matter. Petitions to A, amend the zoning ordinance by adding a new section thirty-one, Federal Street Smart, for smart growth overlay district, FS slash S G O D, and B, amend the city's zoning map by overlaying the FS slash S G O D district on property at fourteen and fourteen R Federal Street, applicant Jamison Properties.
Oh, yeah.
we did, I'm just going to give you an update, what we've done since the last public hearing. So, one of the things that we have done is, we have prepared a working draft of revisions to the ordinance after meeting with the Planning Director. I'd like to submit, I do have eight copies here, redlined, dated as of November fourteenth. I'd like to submit.
Do we have a motion to... So moved.
Second.
Motion by Claudia, second by Bob, to accept the documents from Attorney Tarby. All those in favor? Five-zero carries.
the property of fourteen and fourteen R Federal Street, seeking approval of a smart growth overlay district to include its property on Federal Street. Just going back a couple meetings, we highlighted the fact that the city of Woburn adopted a housing production plan, one of the areas that they encouraged, housing was in the downtown area. Since the last hearing, we met with the Planning Director to begin review of the language in the ordinance, we prepared a working draft which we just submitted, and we're continuing to be committed to work with the Planning Director to make further revisions to the ordinance. We've also completed a parking study at the Abbott Street Lot, which one we'll review in a few seconds. In terms of where the City Council is on this, their public hearing was continued to next Tuesday, the twenty-first. However, there has not been any meeting of the committee on ordinance to review this, so I'm guessing that that hearing date was probably pushed off until December, is my guess. So, with that, introduce Glenn, Glenn Morris, Morris Architects. We'll take you through the updated PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Glenn Morris, Morris Architects, thirty-three Murray Road, West Newton. I ask a question of the Board, would you, much of this presentation we've gone through, would you prefer we go through the whole thing or just the changes?
I think from my perspective, perhaps the changes may be best, and if you could just point out what the difference is and highlight what those changes are for us, and then if anybody has any specific questions.
This is an added slide. One of the questions that came up at one of the previous public hearings was that the process and whether or not, after this review of the zoning, the Planning Board would have an opportunity to review the project as it goes through the design review process. The simple answer is yes. In the ordinance and in the state enabling legislation, there will be an opportunity for that design review process after the zoning's approved. And, in the zoning, as it's been written, this is the section thirty-one, the Planning Board and several other city departments will be asked to make a recommendation to the City Council, who will actually be the site plan approval authority. This is in the packet that you were just handed as well. This is a list, a comment came up, I think at the last meeting, about other cities and towns with forty-odd districts. The downtowns are listed on the top of this slide. There are a number of them. There are a number of other cities and towns that have forty-odd districts, but they're not in downtowns, partially due to the nature of those communities, but they are within those cities and towns. And again, there is a large number of those. We also added this slide, which shows not only the square footage of the units, but shows the layout of the typical units. These are what are known as micro-units. The studios are three hundred and eight square feet, the studios are five hundred and thirty square feet, and these are identical to the units at forty-four Montvale, other than a, potentially a closet moving or something like that, but they're substantially identical to the forty-four Montvale units. Another question came up about transportation. We are close to the MBTA bus lines, one thirty-four and three fifty, and I see a typo, it's actually three fifty, three fifty-four, not three fifty, two fifty-four to Whole Foods in Woburn. But, the one thirty-four bus actually goes to two stop and shops, one in Wob, in Woburn at one twenty-eight ninety-five, and the other in Winchester. And all of those are twelve to fifteen minutes away by bus. It kind of surprised me that the three fifty, three fifty-four bus was that short a trip, but according to MBTA and to Google, it is a fifteen-minute trip. This is a photo of the Abbott Street Lot. Unfortunately, we don't have the time of year or time of day that it was taken, but it shows quite a few open spaces on that lot. I think it's probably November, December, March, April because of the fact that there are no leaves on the trees and there are fairly long shadows, but we really don't have a specific date on that. This is a survey that the Jamisons did on several dates and several times as to the number of parking spaces available in the Abbott Street Lot. And as you can see, in general, most of the times, there are many more than the thirty-two parking spaces that we would be, in quotes, using under the zoning allowance for public parking within five hundred feet. The parking would tend to be overnight, and there tends to be, except on Sunday mornings, a lot of spaces available in the Abbott Street Lot. And I assume the Sunday morning parking is related to church-going. But, there are, there is substantial additional capacity for parking in that lot during the times that we would be using parking, which is generally during the overnight. And, the other is that the sixty spaces that we show on our proposal under the zoning would, is actually less than the experience that the Jamisons have with forty-four Montvale. But, in the zoning proposal, in the proposed section thirty-one, we're calling for one point two-five spaces per unit. And, so, that sixty total, we have twenty-eight on site, those thirty-two spaces that we would be paying for but not necessarily using are well within the capacity of the Abbott Street Lot.
You can't.
This is an elevation of the building, which shows the majority of the facade in brick. The previous drawing showed a composite panel, board and batten kind of panel, where we're now showing the bricks. So, that brownish-red color is the brick. We have kept the horizontal siding. The attempt here was to reflect the typical architecture of the downtown with some of the limestone, such as you see on the bank, replicated in the G F R C, which is a glass fiber reinforced concrete that really looks very much like limestone. We just used it... We just used it on the Kunaud Building in downtown Boston, to replace some panels that had been limestone, but had been cracked. And you can't tell the difference between the two. Color selection, obviously, is important. Then above that, we have the combination in these elevations of brick and the horizontal siding or clavate siding. Again, this reflects the downtown, where you have a number of brick buildings, including City Hall, but you also have a number of prominent clavate buildings, namely in two of the largest churches in downtown. So this helps to break up the facade. We are open to, during the site plan review process, the site plan approval process, to looking at a number of different materials and configurations, but we thought we'd give you a sense of what that could be. And this is an enlargement of one end of that building. One of the things that we did on 44 Montvale is we added coins, Q-U-O-I-N-S, on the corner of the building, and this shows the effect of that. We also have a very strong cornice line. Downtown Woburn has a number of buildings with very strong cornice lines. In fact, 40R encourages that kind of reflection of existing design, existing architecture within neighborhoods, in smart growth overlay district buildings. So those are the changes that have been made to the slides in the PowerPoint presentation. Be happy to go over those or anything else that you'd like to see again. One thing, a couple of questions came up about traffic studies and utilities. In the zoning, as we proposed it, it requires a traffic study, requires a parking study, and requires a utility analysis by an engineer. So those things are all things that are anticipated in the proposed zoning. Thank you.
Attorney Carby?
Yeah, I'd just like to follow up on the parking study. You can look at the various times that we had someone physically counting the vehicles. This was only limited to the Abbott Street Lot. It didn't take into consideration a lot in front of the To wander Club, it did not take into consideration parking along Federal Street, out to Win Street, where there's also parking. And when you look at the strict compliance with the zoning ordinance, Jamison's would need, if you will, 32 parking spaces, where in reality, it's more, we determine 16.
Probably, yeah, probably about 16 more. We've got, no, 20 more, somewhere in there. We've got 28. Their experience is just under one unit per parking space. So we have 48 units. There's a difference between the unit count and the parking space available on the building of 20.
Yeah, and when you look at, you know, the various timetables, we don't see any issue in there being sufficient, you know, parking for this particular use. Obviously, those numbers will fluctuate depending what's going on in the area. Monday night football at the To wander Club is popular. Sunday afternoon is popular for football and other sporting events. So we feel, you know, very, very confident that there will be sufficient parking off-site in order to support this project.
Thank you. Jim?
My question is on the timeline for a slide that you presented, and it jumps out to me where the third item is certification of completeness by the city planner, which is within 30 days, but your timeline for city departments to report to the city council and all the other timelines move forward prior to that. It feels like it backwards. The application should be 100% complete before you start the timeline.
Can you point us to that in the text, if I might?
On number three of third block.
Second page.
Certification of completeness.
No, I meant in the text, may I ask a clarifying question on yours? When you point to that timeline, are there provisions in the proposed zoning ordinance that call these out?
No, this is in the, this is in two places. This is in the state 40R regulations, and it's in the design standards, not in the zoning amendment.
And I'll be honest with you, I have never done one of those certifications of completeness. We haven't had a 40R application in the city, so I don't know what's involved in that. Is it literally certifying that you provided a copy of X and this and that? So it's not an evaluation of any material, it's just a checkoff that, in fact, the application package contains these required elements?
Right, it's your certification that you have enough information to bring it to the board.
Which leads me back to my question. That should be the first step in the process, to make sure the application is, one, complete, before you bring it to a public forum for review.
I don't have any objection to that, nor with the Jamison's. This was just copied from the state Department of Housing and Community Development material on 40R. And, you know, the fact is, we're going to be complete before we get to the end of that unspecified period. We have no problem guaranteeing that we will do that.
I did have a couple of comments. I did like the fact of the masonry veneer. Some of the lentils that you show there, this is a plain rectangular lente, a lot of architectural features that we have in the city, have a nice keystone as part of their lente system. If those could be incorporated, it would accentuate it a little bit.
We can do that. There will be, that design review process is part of site planning. You'll have many opportunities to ask for things like that. If you look at 44 Montvale, we do in fact have a more, it doesn't have a coin, but it's a more, a keystone, but it does have a more articulated head. But during that design review process, we can discuss all of those issues and many more, I'm sure, and come to an agreement on that. We wouldn't have an objection for the keystone.
That's all I have, thank you.
Yes, Clonan?
I thought the slide was interesting, where you recounted the communities that had 40R developments in their downtowns. And I guess the question I'd have for you is, what's been the experience of those developments in those cities, much of which, I'm thinking, well, Boston obviously is not really comparable to what we're doing here. You know, Reading, for example, you know, let's take Reading, which is relatively close to us, and also, when I think of Reading, I think of a suburb, just when I think of Woburn, I think of a suburb. And I see your presentation is geared toward young people and keeping people who are of a generation where they might not seek to own a car, or not, or might seek to live in a city, to attract them to a suburb like Woburn. What's been Reading's experience with their 40R project?
I don't know about their experience in terms of, and we can find out, in terms of ages of people and number of cars, just because we haven't done a study of that. Reading is most often held out as the example of the right way to do 40R. It's a building that fits in well. It does have that board and batten panel, a design in combination with brick and other It's, but in terms of the age, I'm not so sure. We're not restricting people to young people. There's an experience that young people like to live in a downtown area so that they are close to other services, and it's almost become a joke how little they tend to want to get their driver's license and have cars, which is unlike the experience of most of us, I would say, who wanted a license as soon as we turned 16, or 15 and a half.
Well, that kind of gets to my point, because I'm coming from the same experience you are.
Yep.
And when I see the micro-units and I see what you're trying to achieve here, I'm just wondering whether on the ground, it works as advertised. If, for example, you are going after the same market, I assume, these are rental units, correct? We're talking?
We're going for the same market, which is really the corporate.
Well, I'm sorry, my question isn't finished. I just needed information. These are rental units, sir?
These are all rental units.
All right. So essentially, you're going for the same market that, say, you know, the Assembly Square Development is, right? That live, work, play sort of area where they've got these high-rise buildings going up, that appear to attract, you know, the millennial demographic, the same thing as perhaps the district in Reading, where those buildings are going up. And so I guess my question is, it certainly works in Somerville. Did it work in Reading? Because what I need to figure out is, if I say, sure, go ahead, put this building in Woburn Center, on the assumption that the people who live there will have cars at a much lesser rate than, you know, other developments that have gone in. Whether that's accurate, whether people who move into this, into these micro-units will use Uber, or will take a bus, for example. By the way, the 354, which I'm familiar with, is odd, because it only runs one way sometimes, and then back, you know, into Boston in the morning and out of Boston. And so if someone really wanted to use that to get to Whole Foods, boy, that would be a trick. You could do it, but, you know, a little difficult. So I'm just, I'm just wondering if that experience of maybe other cities that have implemented this, whether really what they get in their 40R development is residents who are using cars at lesser rates. Has parking become an issue in Reading, for example? I would be interested to know that.
We can find that out for you, or certainly attempt to, but our comparison isn't really with the project in Somerville. Our comparison is with 44 Montvale Avenue, and the experience that the Jamison's have there. They are the same units, they are experiencing this kind of car usage. They're not all millennials, but remember, a lot of the people that they're renting to are people who are spending one to three to six months, sometimes more, on a corporate assignment in the Woburn area, but then may go back to Texas. There are people who do stay there for a longer period of time. There tend to be younger people, tend to be the corporate people, and I think there's even a couple of older people. But they, because of the nature of the units, they all tend to be, number one, empty nesters, number two, people who don't use their cars a lot. And that's just their experience. We will check on some of these other communities to see what we can find.
Well, so.
But the comparison really is to 44 Montvale.
Sure. Well, that sort of leads to another question, which is, the way that some of these slides have been sort of slanted is, hey, you know, we need housing in our community for our kids to stay here, or hey, we want to attract young entrepreneurial-class people. But what I'm hearing is what really is the marketing plan, or what really is the idea is to attract all these short-term residents, which honestly, is a little less attractive than the idea of having a community of, you know, younger people that decide Woburn is cool, and come here and patronize the shops and the restaurants, and, you know, add to our community, as opposed to short-termining staying in our community, which sort of leads to, you know, the Airbnb issue. I'm assuming that that's not the plan, but what caught, what stopped somebody from, you know, saying, oh, well, want to stay in Woburn, you know, for a week? Here's my, you know, let's compete with the hotels. So the short-term nature of it, you know, I get that that's happening at 44 Montvale, but, you know, what we're selling here is a vision of, you know, many, the district, or many, you know, many bringing in people to add to our community on a maybe longer-term basis than one to six months. So, you know, I just point out, there's a contradiction there.
What we're trying to do is create the opportunity. And these type of units, we know are attractive, given a number of the studies that have been done, and the commentary that you often hear to younger people. However, they have 48 units to fill, and some of those will be what are shorter term, but not short-term. They don't rent through Airbnb. They have a minimum of one month, and most of their tenants are far longer than a month. So it's not that kind of hoteling operation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
How many units are there now?
13.
I just, when I'm looking at this, I know that the Reading 40R is, I think, 26 acres of.
The 40R is, the project on Haven Street is not anywhere near that.
Okay, but the 40R zone that they did is 26 acres. So when they rezone, they did it for what they would consider to be the future of Rent, or a huge, you know, some idea of, it's sort of like the Commonwealth overlay district that we did. This, to me, is just rezoning this piece of land so that you can actually build this building, because without it, you can't.
Well, we could go for a special permit.
Okay, but this would give it sort of by right, because we'd be changing the district. So where, other than this one little spot, which may, you know, there's a piece in there about money back from the state, which, I don't know how easy that is to get, where is the other benefit to Woburn here? And also, it's going to be rentals, so we're not going to have basically families moving in. What are the other benefits to Woburn, other than this one little parcel of land? What are the other benefits to Woburn by doing this, by converting this piece of, this parcel of land over to a 40R?
So one intangible benefit, and we have history of that at Montville Avenue, is that the tenants in that building shop and do business with the downtown merchants. Jamison's provide information to each tenant on the various services, retail, hair salons, restaurants, et cetera, in the downtown area. So there's an intangible benefit to the merchants in the downtown area, and that's what you want, you know, from your housing. There'll be additional real estate taxes if the project gets approved, there's going to be a slide here claiming with the money. Even though they would use less parking spaces, they would still be required to pay the city if they're succeeding. if they're successful and gain approval, $144,000, that would be paid to the parking fund, pretty significant when you look at the downtown area. The density bonus payments from the Commonwealth of Mass, that's another $144,000, plus the incentive zoning payment. Plus, we're providing 20% affordable housing, as you know, it's been a hot topic in the city recently, and this project would provide 20, 20% affordable housing units. And additional housing downtown, that's consistent with the housing production plan.
I do, I do like the 20%.
I'm sorry?
I do like the 20%. That is a nice little piece to it. Right at the moment.
Any other questions?
Yes. So following up on Bob's point, say, you are unable to convince the city council to pass a 40R development. You said you can build the, the building through site plan review. Could you just sort of give me what the Plan B, so to speak, might be? I mean, there must be a reason why you're going through quite a lot of trouble to bring in this zoning amendment, and I'm just trying to figure out what it is, because Bob's point is well-taken, that we're doing an overlay district for a very small area. You know, the question I'm asking is, if this is such a great idea, why aren't we doing an overlay district for the rest of the parcels around it too? Right? I mean, that's my question.
Well, and on the issue of why aren't we, we doing a overlay district for a larger area, we don't control that other land. The, in Reading, the town of Reading set the 40R district. They applied for the state approval for the 40R district. So it was a much broader area. That went through their planning department, planning board. I believe they even got a grant to help them pay for all of that process. 40R does allow an individual property owner to apply for 40R. And when there was the discussion on Commerce Way and Presidential Way, about 40R, those were bigger pieces of property, definitely, but they were also individual owners making an application. So, you know, we wouldn't object to a larger area, but we don't have the ability or the interest in trying to go through a process of dealing with 20, 30, 40 different property owners to have them sign on to the 40R process. Why didn't we go to the 40R process? I think part of it was that we thought it would be more interesting to the city of Woburn, because you would be getting incentive payments from the state, which, by the way, are guaranteed based on the number of units and the fact that it's a 40R overlay district. So it's, I mean, you've got to go through the administrative process of getting the money, but that money is, is guaranteed. Also, there is a financing advantage to doing a 40R. Mass Development offers a program in a 40R district that allows you to borrow a larger percentage of the money to build the project. The Jamison's have not decided to do that, but it is another option that's available under 40R.
All right. And so the answer that I'm getting is, well, we had two options. We could either have come in under a special permit process, where the city council would have the ability to thumbs up or thumbs down, a special permit for this building, or a 40R process where, if approved, the city would benefit by getting more payments from the state, which would in turn perhaps make the project more interesting to the city council. Is that, is that in a nutshell what the answer is?
I think that pretty much covers it.
Okay.
May I clarify one thing, just to make sure that you're getting the accurate answer? If you didn't go through 40R, could you do exactly the project that you're proposing here? Because I thought, at least with respect to height, you have an extra story. I think you're limited to three stories or 40 feet in the downtown, and I believe this is, and that's not including the garage. And this shows four stories.
Well, the garage under current...
Doesn't get included.
Woburn zoning doesn't count as height.
Right.
That's admittedly a bit odd, but it doesn't.
Right.
The, what we were, what we are proposing is a building that would be 40 feet high under the Woburn zoning ordinances. We are proposing an additional story in the zoning amendment, but it's still within the 40 feet. So instead of being three stories of 40 feet, it's four stories of 40 feet, which is readily doable from a design and engineering point of view in that 40-foot height.
But, but I'm just trying to clarify for Claudia's, to Claudia's point, the fact that, right now, the current zoning limits at two, three stories would preclude you from going simply for a special permit, you would need further zoning relief, at least with respect to that.
You would.
And then the affordable housing under current zoning is 10%. As ordinance proposes, 20%.
And may, may I make a point on that, too, if you wouldn't mind? I apologize, but, and, and I apologize, because I don't generally like to do this for the first time and surprise the applicant, but it occurred to me, just late this afternoon when I was looking at the details, as you point out, you do have 20%, which is more than the current affordable housing requires. And that equates, I believe, 10 units out of the 48 would be affordable. If you provided 25% affordable, which I think would translate to 12 units, my understanding is that by going to 25% affordable units, all of the units in that project, all 48, would count toward the city's subsidized housing inventory. And that's the magic 10% number that we all try to attain under state law. So I'm going to ask to consider, or ask the applicant to consider, whether he would, they would be willing to consider increasing that 20% to 25% as a minimum, and that would have, you know, another benefit to the city more broadly than the current proposal would have.
This has actually come up a couple of times, and we have agreed to the 25%, and the Jamison's have agreed to that 25%, which would give you the, both the two additional units, but allow all 48 units to count against your 10% requirement.
Then apparently, it was not a surprise. I thought it might be.
Well, honestly, that's a pretty big carrot. Thank you.
We got all carrots and no sticks.
Do we have any further questions? The board members? Anything further from the applicant's point? Okay. Thank you. This matter is scheduled for a public hearing. If there are any members in the audience that would like to step forward and speak either in favor, favor or against this matter, please do so at this time. It appears we have no, no members of the audience that would like to address the board. Do we have a recommendation?
Yes. Well, I want to make sure, first of all, that before, and I realize we haven't made that motion, but before there's any motion to close the hearing, let's make sure we have all the info that we think we need from the applicants. I did meet with Attorney Tarby, as he mentioned, and with the architect. We did, or I made some suggested recommendations to some changes to the ordinance. Most of them were, I think, centered around the fact that the 40R requires that all of the provisions that would be applicable to the district be included in the 40R. In other words, they don't allow you to simply say, parking shall be in accordance with the parking section of the zoning ordinance. You literally have to pull them in. So in doing that, I had some comments, some of which you'll see reflected in the red line, references to projects that may be phased. Some projects are large enough where there's actually the phasing of construction. That's not going to be contemplated here. It's one building. Had some questions and some suggestions about the signage. The signage that's included right now in the draft covers everything from wall signs to window signs to awnings and roof signs. And so I urged them, to the extent that they could determine now what signs they did or didn't need, it would be appropriate to consider amending the proposed ordinance to include only the things that would truly be needed in this project. So I've not had a chance, although I, I know that Attorney Tarby has passed them out this evening, I haven't had a chance to review them. I don't know, I'm assuming that they accepted what they found acceptable and, you know, passed on recommendations that they didn't feel they need. I couldn't, on the cuff this evening, tell you of those they may have passed on, which ones I think I, you know, would recommend that you pursue as board members, maybe as a condition or a caveat to some recommendation you might make to the council. So that would be a little hard for me to do. Really, the only kind of big issue, big-picture questions I had was the adequacy of parking. It's very tight there. I appreciate the information that they provided that showed some detailed review of some of those lots in, in a fashion that hasn't really been done before, to my knowledge. Alderman Anderson did forward to me late this afternoon a photograph he took of that parking lot this morning at 9:15 that made it look pretty full. In fact, he told me in his email that it was full at that hour. So it is, it is difficult, but I know that we will have a new parking lot at the library of about, I think, 80 or 90 spaces, somewhere in that neighborhood. That will help a little bit, probably used largely by the library patrons and employees, which should free up some of the existing lot that's there now. But the density of the project, which is related to the traffic, excuse me, to the parking requirement, the density is a general concern. I don't know that there's any inadequacies in our infrastructure in being able to support that kind of development, but it, it is a dense project. It will be denser than, I think, probably any project we've got in the downtown, but I, I don't know that it's a significant, a significant issue for the planning board members or the city council in terms of the number of units being proposed, is 48 total in four stories, which equates to, you know, it's about a quarter of an acre a lot, I believe.
Just about, yeah.
Just about quarter of an acre.
Thank you. So the first issue is whether we will continue the public hearing?
If you feel that there is additional information, I know that earlier in the conversation there was some discussion about maybe we, doing some research on Reading or other similar communities to see what the experiences are there. If that's information that you'd want to have for your recommendation, might be wise to leave the hearing open, just because some of the new info might engender public comment.
Do we have a motion?
Tina, just before anyone makes a motion, essentially, from your point of view, you would like an additional opportunity to go through the red line in order to give us a final thumbs up or thumbs down on various changes that you wouldn't be able to do tonight.
Yes.
So that would leave us in the position of making a, a general recommendation that would have to be specifically spiffed up at some point in the future, which strikes me as a problem. So, given that you're nodding and telling me that's indeed true, I would make a motion to continue this matter to our next meeting on the 28th of November.
Yes.
Second.
Motion by Claudia to continue the matter to the November 28th meeting. Second by Bob. All those in favor?
Five, zero.
Next up, under public hearings, we have a petition to amend zoning ordinance by amending table of uses, Section 5.1.41, entitled Research and Testing Laboratory, to A, allow this use by right instead of by special permit/site plan review in the I-P, IP-2, I-G, O-P and OP-93 zoning districts if creating less than 25,000 square feet of new gross floor area. B, to allow this use by special permit/site plan review in the I-P, IP-2, I-G, S-2, O-P and OP-93 zoning districts if creating 25,000 square feet or more of new gross floor area. And C, subject to applications for research and testing laboratories, special permit/site plan review applications to Section 1B, 1B, Development Impact Mitigation. The sponsors, President Richard Hagerty and Alderman Edward Tedesco.
Madam Chairman and members of the board, this is a proposal that actually was submitted to the city council, or to Aldermans Hagerty and Tedesco, on behalf of Mayor Galvin. Mayor Galvin has had a number of conversations, as have I, with a number of businesses who are interested in opening research and testing labs in the city, but who are finding that in several of the appropriate zoning districts, that particular use requires a special permit, which is interesting, because biomedical facilities are allowed in those same districts by right. So the proposal is to, in fact, as you said, and I'll say it in summary, is in fact to try to open up, or to allow, rather, by right, small-sized projects defined as 25, less than 25,000 square feet, and to allow those in the IP, IP-2, IG and OP-3, allowing them by right. They would still be subject to site plan, excuse me, a special permit if they exceeded 25,000 square feet in size. We think it's a relatively easy change, one that would help us encourage these types of businesses to cite and locate in Woburn. They often have relatively high-paying jobs. They're on the cutting edge of technology very often, and are the kinds of businesses we hope to encourage to cite here. So we're hopeful that this is a relatively easy and innocuous change for the planning board and the city council to adopt and accept.
Do we have any questions? Or anything for discussion of the board members? This matter is also scheduled for a public hearing, and at this time, if there are any members of the audience that would like to step forward and either speak for or against this proposed amendment, please do so at this time.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing, made by Bob Doherty, second by Claudia. All those in favor?
Five, zero carries.
Do we have a recommendation?
Yes, I would. I would recommend that the planning board, in turn, recommend to the city council adoption of the measure as proposed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bob to accept the director's recommendation, second by Claudia. All those in favor? Five, zero carries. Thank you. Next up, under subdivisions, we have two matters. First is Wall, a state subdivision, and second is Dragon Court, subdivision, Garvey Road. At this time, I will be recusing myself from these matters and would ask Jim Callahan to step forward.
Okay, next up, wall states of division, approval acceptance of ASBIL plans, acceptance of Form G, covenants, absements and utilities, release of remaining bond being held as surety to guarantee project completion. Robert Murray, trustee Lexington Trust.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we had slated this matter, hopefully for action this evening. The engineering department did a review of the ASBIL and has noted a number of issues requiring correction. So, because that's integral to any final bond release and the rest of your votes, we're actually asking you to table this matter from this evening and place it on your next agenda for the twenty-eighth instead. We hope to have all the issues resolved by then.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bob, second by Claudia, all those in favor? Four-zero, understanding. Next up, Dragon Court subdivision, Garvey Road. Update on construction progress and performance with the conditions of subdivision approval and discussion with developer Robert Murray, Murray Hills.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, just to summarize where we are and why we're here. The last couple of planning board meetings, we've had discussion relative to a number of issues that have been raised by several abutters to this project. To date, there have been several things. One, that work was conducted on-site outside of the construction hours that had been authorized by the planning board in a condition of approval. A second issue that, there was a condition imposed by the board that stated that all mature trees in good health that were not part of development areas shall be preserved. And we have a complaint by an abutter that in fact, all of the trees have been removed from the site, including some which were mature, in good health, and outside of development areas. And thirdly, there's four issues, but the third one that we've talked about is the concern raised by an abutter that construction of a drainage swale, which is included on the approved subdivision plan, the construction of that swale might negatively affect the root system of trees on his property, leading to their demise. And the last issue which has been raised at at least one of the meetings earlier are issues relative to dust control. I can address that last issue separately at any time that you would like me to. But the issues that I mentioned, the first three, work outside of the construction hours conceivably. The tree removal and the swale were reasons why some of the board members requested that Mr. Murray attend a meeting of the planning board to address these matters directly with the planning board members. He was slated to be here at our last meeting, or we had hoped, actually, we'd invited him to our last meeting, but he was unable to make that meeting because his attorney wasn't able to make it. So Mr. Murray is here this evening with Attorney Tarby to try to address any questions or issues of concern that the board members have on any of those issues. If you want, we could, I could try to start the discussion with the hours of the construction, the condition relative to the hours of construction.
That'll be fine.
And telling you that there'd been three specific complaints slash observations we'd received. The first was from an abutter, that there was work on-site one evening that extended until seven seventeen PM. And the planning board's condition of approval called for construction to be done by seven o'clock in the evening. There was a second incident where workers were on-site, working outside and inside some of the houses on Columbus Day, a Monday, which was a holiday. Although it's a holiday for some and a working holiday for others, the planning board's condition said no work on holidays. And in fact, they were on-site on that Monday. There was a third observation that was made, not by an abutter, but by a ward counselor, who went to the site one day at the request of the abutters and observed workers on-site, some of whom for part of the time were sitting on stairs, presumably waiting for the hour to begin. But she also observed others who were walking back and forth between vehicles carrying things into the house. With respect to that last incident, I would say, in my opinion, as the planning director, that sitting on stairs and perhaps moving materials between vehicles and the house was not construction. I'm not sure that's what would write to the level of construction. It was making no noise, but it was people on-site and moving. But were they constructing? We didn't actually define construction. Not surprisingly, most communities are, ordinances might not. But I'd spoken with the city solicitor, who actually said she had on one occasion with a forty-B project, had a reason to have to define construction. So, right now, we don't define it. So, those were the three incidents that I know of. In my opinion, as I said, the last one really wasn't construction. The first one, certainly, they stayed past seventeen minutes. We have photographs of that. Mr. Murray will not, or at least his representatives, did not dispute that, although they expressed surprise because they said they had been very careful and thorough in getting the message across about the work hours. They really felt that they had gotten that message through. But the photos showed what they showed, they didn't dispute the time. So we have conceivably a holiday and seventeen-minute period where there were two times when perhaps there was construction on-site that should not have been going on, given the condition and the way you worded it in your decision.
Anything else?
Oh, the last thing, I, I will, if, if it's appropriate now or at the end, I don't know if you're interested in any recommendations. I'd be happy to make them as I go or after the discussion at the end.
Mr. Tarby, Mr. Murray, do you want to address these as each item? And see if we can come to some type of resolve, an understanding?
Yeah, I was generally, just casually outlined them. But Mr. Murray did, after Columbus Day, did install a sign on the premises that, you know, put everyone to notice what the work hours are. And I would agree that, you know, someone walking from their truck, bringing tools to the site is not construction. Someone sitting on the stairs waiting for seven o'clock to start is not construction. Someone working seventeen minutes after the hour. We all get into our work at times and we don't, you know, aren't watching our clock all the time. Talking about people working there two, three hours after the end date. So I think, in our view, that, that issue's been resolved. The sign is installed. And I'm not sure whether you've received any other complaints since then.
I have not, I have not.
On that, you know, just going forward, I'm assuming we all agree Thanksgiving is a holiday and Christmas Day is a holiday, you know, Christmas Eve, you know, are they working Christmas Eve? Okay, and then, you know, you've got your New Year's Day, I mean, I-
Sunday also, so.
Okay, just, just making sure, because, I mean, obviously, we want to be sure we all understand what a holiday is, Columbus Day. Granted, you know, I worked on Columbus Day, I didn't even know it was Columbus Day. So I can see how that could have happened. You know, Thanksgiving, Christmas, that's different. So, you know, that's my, that's all I, I think the holiday issue, we've got it resolved for the next couple of months. When, when is construction over, in your, in your estimation? How long are we going to be, you know, trying to figure out whether holidays are weekends?
Construction will run into spring at least.
Into the spring, okay. All right, I'm just looking at-
What happens is that sometimes, we hire contractors. And in this case, they didn't tell, some of these people work on piecemeal. They want to get there early and they don't, it didn't get to them the timing. And, but the sign up, we made sure that that was, that's what happened, actually. The boss gives them the job to do and they go off and they start early. Or they're saying that they didn't have the information, which they have now.
Okay, and these are going to be the same contractors the rest of the time? So that we're not dealing with new ones?
I have a firm on the job also, so he's every day.
Okay, thank you.
So for that issue there, moving forward, you have a site supervisor on-site daily?
Yes.
And he understands clearly the obligation that you have to the city and the abutters for the work hours and noise complaints and any dust complaints and things of that matter. That he's enabled to make decisions and terminate the employment for the crews of the day if necessary, if they're not following the direct concerns?
Yes, he has, and this, my sign also says it will be-
And they have his name and phone number on that sign also?
No, it has my name, it has my, we can do that, that's, but they all have his phone. Here's his cell phone, wait a minute, they all have his cell phone.
Okay, so if we move forward and we, we find that the abutters are having complaints and they come to City Hall, we'll be asking both parties present and your site supervisor to give an account of why they're unable to follow it. I mean, personally, if you have an employee that has now been brought to the table a couple of times here, that they have to be accountable for their actions, unfortunately, you have to answer for them. This is, as you're aware, I'm quite, quite familiar with the process, but someone's going to be accountable on that job site at all times. I don't know if there's much more to talk about on this subject, but unless someone else on the board does, that's what I'd like to see, is a site contact with a cell phone number, if, if it has to be, that these residents, when they, they shouldn't have another complaint. If they have one, they can call that directly to cease the operation immediately and then deal with the consequences, you know, why it's getting out of hand.
Are they to provide that cell number to me, or is that a cell number that-
Personally, you know, no one wants to see their cell number on the side of the street.
I would prefer to provide you the cell number, you know, given the, I'll just say numerous calls that are made on a consistent basis. I think we better have your cell phone number.
We can also give you a number in my office, so, the other two numbers.
So, and the, let's, we're clear on any of the gray area holidays? The Patriot's Days and any other-
Martin, I'm thinking of MLK Day is the next one.
Not all the holidays are federal holidays and recognized by all parties, so we'll consider any holiday that's on the calendar to be a, a non-work day.
Next issue?
Yes, please.
Okay. The second issue was related, again, to a condition of approval, which was that all mature trees that were in good health and not in developable areas were to be preserved. And the allegation or the complaint is that in fact, all of the mature trees on the site ultimately were removed and that that violates the condition that the planning board imposed.
I'd like to discuss this matter, this one, I did weigh on quite a bit. If you can take a look at it from lot by lot and indicate the areas where the trees were shown on the drawing, where the work zones were for construction. And then obviously, the trees are no longer there in most cases for the lots themselves. The swales, we'll deal with those individually. And the back of the lot on the, behind the cul-de-sac, and then you have the swale on the adjoining abutters' property line, which is probably going to be the most difficult. I'd like to see if you can go through the slide and explain to the board why these trees were removed.
Absolutely.
Just step down so I can follow you from the-
Do you have a pointer?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a pointer or something?
Well, first of all, before we get into that, I'd like to make a couple of comments regarding the tree removal. In completing our due diligence for this meeting, the planning board minutes of the subdivision do not contain any discussion about condition five. The only mention of trees are the street trees. I went through my file, I looked at all my files. The objections to the subdivision did not include any comments about trees. The comments made by an abutter that's pushing this issue were water, drainage and traffic study. There was nothing about trees and mature trees. You know, I'm going to throw something out to you, given, given the fact that that condition is nowhere to be found in the minutes. I keep copies notes when I, you know, go to a public hearing. And sometimes I get a meeting sitting in the back of the room, taking notes. I'm going to suggest that perhaps condition five may have been a cut and paste by Mr. Tarallo from another decision. Don't know, I just saw that out to you since it was mentioned nowhere. In terms of addressing the lots, I do have a chart here I'd like to pass out to you and go over the removal of the trees lot by lot, like it's submitted for.
Well- Joe, I have a question. In all the years that you've been doing this, has anybody cut and pasted something on a, as a condition?
Absolutely.
You have seen that?
Absolutely.
I, I've never seen it. I've never seen it in our presentation, anything that we've ever done, I don't. Yeah, I, what would be the purpose of that?
You have, you have, you have a decision. You know, I have presentations that I prepare that I cut and paste from previous, you know, presentations I made.
Yeah, but this is being put into the condition-
Right, it could have been-
-of a permit that, that your client is being given and you're saying that Ed Tarallo may have cut or pasted something about trees?
I just threw it out there as a suggestion. It doesn't show up in the minutes, it doesn't show up in my notes. So perhaps that was done.
Well, let's go on the assumption that it wasn't done. And my question is, to, to Mr. Murray, where are the trees?
I'm, I'm going to explain that.
Okay, please do.
I was just about to pass out a plan that will show each lot and I'll go over all the trees.
Do we have a motion on this?
Motion to accept into the record.
Second.
Motion by Claudia, second by Bob, all those in favor? Four-zero, to accept the documents.
Okay, so, starting on the plan, moving from right to left. When you look at number one on the plan, the trees that are shown, that were shown in the southwesterly corner of the subdivision in what is lot seven, were removed to facilitate the grading that was necessary to excavate and install the foundation for the duplex, as well as to remove a bunch of rubble, a lot older, rubbish that had accumulated in that area to allow for the grading and landscaping of a lot, as you see it on the approved subdivision plan. Although the plan shows trees with varying calibers from two eighteen-inch and two twenty-inch, the picture does not appear to reflect this, the picture's being at the end of the plans that I've submitted. When you go to number two, this area was filled- When you go to, um, number two, this area was filled, um, and the trees, um, were growing on top of the fill. None of these trees could be considered mature, nor were they very sizable. They were removed in order to remove the fill material grade for the drainage and also to provide the grading and landscaping on that lot six as shown on the plan. When you get to, uh, number three, as shown on the plan, um, all three pictures show the mid-area, the land having mostly brush, with a few small caliber trees with a roadway and the houses are- are located. When you get to, um, number four, the twelve inch and fourteen inch caliber trees on lot three, uh, which that lot is known, were removed to allow for the excavation and building of the foundation of the duplex on lot three. When we get to number five, the trees along the north westerly side of the property were cut per the approved subdivision plan in order to build the drainage swale that's shown on the grading plan, which were attached to G one in detail page D two to be twenty feet wide with a three to one slope on both sides split up to one foot along the entire property line to carry strong water that will flow into the catch basin on the front corner of lot one to allow through the system to a detention basin along the front of the property. And the- as- as you can see, um, from this plan, um, the trees that were removed were necessary to be removed. They were all part of the development and therefore we had every right to remove those trees. You know, Mr. Murray's been before this board and previous boards, you know, I'm guessing at least a hundred times. He's got a great reputation, doesn't play games and follows conditions and permits. And he did here like he did in every other subdivision that he builds.
Bob?
Yeah, is there any tree planting, um, going to be coming along with the landscaping part of the lands and, uh?
Yeah, we're- we're, well, we're installing two street trees per lot.
Well, two what?
Two street trees per lot.
Okay.
If you look at, um, G one, you'll see the, um, you'll see the trees along, um, the street.
I have a question for you on lot one, that southwest corner. Right where your number one is, uh, there's a string of trees right going diagonally from that lot corner to the back corner of the house. The transition, uh, anywhere, I'm trying to read it, eight to sixteen inch trees, uh, diameter trees. Why were those- those taken down? You said foundation and grading.
You said lot one or number?
Lot seven.
Lot one, or number one on your drawing, which is a-
Yeah, they were taken, they were removed to facilitate the grading necessary to excavate and install the foundation, as well as to remove those large boulder there, a bunch of rubble and rubbish that had accumulated in the area, um, over the years. That all had been removed to allow for the grading and the landscaping, as you see on the approved subdivision plan.
There's a bunch of rubble on that site. I think it came off in ninety-three when it was built, when it was pushed in there, rocks and stumps and-
There was also in the area of, um, number two was shown on the plan. There was a bunch of fill in there with trees growing, you know, from the fill.
I- I don't see anything on the- in the photo that you're showing me. It depicts a stockpile of material in lot one, but it's only one photograph. Nor do I agree with the statement that you made for the regrading of the contours that are shown on the drawing for the excavation, the foundation hole, needing to take out all those trees.
Fill that degrade that lot, it was about four feet of fill running. They'd have bring a lot up to grade at Dragon Court, fill it in the tree. Any trees left there wouldn't have lived anymore, but there was- there's not that- that- that lot, that whole corner lot was filled, had to be filled to put the foundation, bring it up to grade of the street of, uh, the new street here on Dragon Court.
How much did you say you raised the grade?
You graded- you graded the lot with foundation-
And did you say you raised it?
Yes.
By how many feet?
Well, it's probably, I'm saying three, four feet and five, yes, and then you said it was lower than- lower than Dragon Court.
Trying to read the grade contour, but you're picking up your contour right in the bottom right corner to the corner of the- there where the new shade tree is. The- the grade's not changing too much. Same thing with the rear of the house. Unless I'm missing something, you know, if there had to be an excavation because of rubble, that's one thing. But the grading of existing drawing versus the new one, the new grade contour don't differ too greatly. I mean, I'm not- I- I want to get beyond this matter tonight, but I also want to be open-minded about it and I- I just don't see, in lot one in particular, where there was a necessity to take out those trees. Lots two and five where you have the swales going on, there's no doubt in my mind that had to go in. There are some isolated cases, but that- that lot there, some of those trees could have been saved. If that was part of the conditions, they should have been.
Well, again, we maintain that-
And I don't see, you know, that- that's a different su- subject that needs to be addressed between, you know-
What is that subject?
That subject needs to be addressed between the City of Wolverhampton Planning Department and yourselves was what was agreed upon on that- on that night, you know, and backing up documents, whether that condition was cut and pasted possibly, or whether it was discussed in the meeting. You know, and if we have to look at the- the video, those should be, but, um, you know, I- I have a hard time agreeing to that- that, uh, statement there, this-
If you- if you see on the site, you can see where it had to gr- it had to grade it and the trees wouldn't- any tree, the- the trees weren't really that good and they wouldn't have lasted there with the lot and the foundation. We have to put yards and houses to grade them up, you know, and it wasn't last that anything was there. There was- there was that made there. If you fill around the trees, it'll last two, three years and I'm going to be back at them now.
That I- that I agree with a hundred percent and- and that's where I'm going, not only with this, but with other projects that we look at, and a lot of folks don't understand that, is when the grade contours change dramatically and you bury the root system, they're just going to die in a matter of months. So I'm just trying to be as upfront and honest to the folks that sit in the- in the audience that may not know the technical drawings like some of us do and to point it out to them. I think there's a couple of trees in the corner that could have been saved possibly, but that there is no as-built photo. Lot two, let's jump to that, out back, there was a series of trees in a cluster where you have the swale out back there. It just says tree line, right inside of that, uh, the clouded area.
The, uh, that area is the trees, we've cut the trees, the trees, this tree substance, although we haven't done it yet, but that's- that's in the swell, the- the big trees there were in the swell.
They are in the swell, okay. The clouded area delineating the tree line, without question, goes right through the swell. Is there any other trees in that grouping that are substantial?
There's nothing, I don't think, there's nothing, no.
The only other area where there- there was a concern that I heard, and I'm just speaking on my own from the previous meetings, was on lot five, which is a swale on the adjoining property line on the left-hand side of the sheet, which we received emails from the neighbors concerned about their trees dying if they disturb the root system, and-
That's on lot two?
That is lot number one and two, right, which is a swale along your property line.
The swale, there's a stone wall to protect the property lines, because it could be by stone wall. We were not- we started, the swale starts at the stone wall close to the right. So anything we'd be doing, we wouldn't be bothering any- any neighbors over there because it's just the way we could do it. And that was put in for the drainage for the subdivision. That I put in because the- maybe at the time it was approved, I suggested we put the swale in there because there was concern water would run off my subdivision of there. And I suggested we put a swale in there, run it down Dragon Court, tie it in my drainage, which is on the subdivision, tie it in the drainage side, install on Dragon Court, on the edge of Dragon Court.
The trees in that area of the swale, how large are they, do you know offhand?
Um, a large.
How large in diameter?
There's a couple of previous sites. I'd say probably fifteen inches, maybe bigger, something like fifteen to eighteen.
So, the problem that, Pierre's, step in please, that we're faced with, when this is brought to our attention by one of the abutters, was that the swale going along the property line, as approved, um, has trees over there that are being debated, obviously, whether it need to be saved by condition or not, and how that swale is going to be constructed and not, um, disturb the- the abutters trees that are on their property, the root system.
We haven't- we haven't gone to tend to disturbing trees on everybody's property. There's a detail of the swale on- on our plan that shows just the swale graded and runs- runs all the way down to Dragon Court, and that's what we- I mean, I had to pay money to take the trees down, I don't know if I would have cut them down because I want them. They- they hit, it's probably approved by the insurance department and, uh, we've checked Iran at the time, both, they approved this drainage plan. And we, I went back and forth on how it was designed and with them, and they approved it. And that shows the swale on our plan.
Bob?
Yeah, the- the, um, the resident's concern is that by putting the swale in, you're going to damage the roots on the tr- on the trees in his yard, and therefore those trees will die.
I don't- his, I believe that he's the street, probably the closest street to his-
How far are the-
-property line, it's probably fifty, twenty feet away.
So the branches don't come out as far as where the swale, where- where the ditch is going to be?
Um, the, if I might interject, uh, at least one of the trees on the abutters property that's of concern is actually noted, eighteen inches, and you'll see it on the abutters property. I can't tell you exactly how far, but it's closer than twenty.
Because I'm not a, um, I'm not an expert in trees whatsoever at all, but, um, I was always told that a tree's roots branch out as far as the-
Ground.
The- as the branches go. So if you're looking at the top of the tree and the branches extend twenty feet this way, the roots actually extend twenty feet that way also. So that was my question about the trees, the branches of the trees in- in the resident's yards. Do any of them come as far as where that, where the- where the ditch is going to be?
I don't think any of them come over the property line, no, so that you'd be that far away. I don't believe any- any of the branches from the abutters property can go over the property line or the wall. And we, when we do build a swale, we have to be careful, I mean, we- we're not going to untake a wall or we can't hit the walls, so we have to be very careful, which we will be.
Well, the roots could be under the wall, though, I mean-
I don't think the trees, the roots from the other tree, I don't believe they come over the property line, so we wouldn't be affected by them.
Okay, but I, you, but we- we don't know that for sure though, right? I mean, you'd have to take a look at it.
Yeah.
And just see where the branches are, I mean, if-
I- I bowled it, but I mean, we could, we could put some raisins on it or something, yeah.
Please, just, yeah, take a look at it, because like I said, I'm not an expert on it, but I'm told that's how far the roots go. And if you see any of the branches going out that far, it looks like you're going to cut them off, you are going to kill the tree. And if it's nowhere near, if- if the branches are ten feet away from where you're going to be digging, then there should be no issues whatsoever. It's not, it's not an expert, I think, either.
The construction of the swale on that, those two lots are obviously probably the most- most concerned of the abutters. From what I understand, the emails and, uh, paper copy of conversations and such that we've seen here as a board. It's going to be a delicate construction process and to keep everyone happy. Is there anyone that you employ currently that has any expertise in this field that can weigh in as far as you're doing the construction to prevent any damage to any roots if they're encountered from the adjoining property? To prevent any, um, further disruption and aggravation, I guess, to the abutters of their concerns of the trees in the root system?
I need to look, I don't think we have any of this, we know that, no. There's only, so the first lot, there are no trees as far as that, in the property, the next property I buy own, so there's only the last one out that would be, that is concerned about the tree that-
Yeah, ju- just for the record, those four properties, um, two of those are owned by Mr. Murray. And we're getting back to the drainage swale for a second. You know, Mr. Murray paid to have it designed. We had several meetings with Jay Duran to go over the- the drainage with Jay Corey. They approved it. It was approved as part of the approved plan, financing in place to do the construction. And, you know, I'm not, am I hearing you, you may want to change that?
No, I, go ahead, Bob.
Joe, that's not the- the point, the point, and- and this could be for all for not, but if I was an abutter and for some reason my trees and my yard were going to be destroyed because of something that you're doing to build those houses, I would be bull. So, no, we're not ask- we're not asking you to remove it or change anything, but what, you know, let's say it was your house and they were building beside your house and you had some beautiful trees in your yard, and you found out that by building that other house, they're going to kill the trees in your yard, what would you do?
Well, if they killed the tree, I'd probably make an insurance claim.
No, what, no, seriously, they're going to- they're going to kill the trees in your yards. What would you do? Just say, well, the plan's approved, everything's done, all the insurance is done. You're okay, good, just kill my trees. Would you do that?
I'm not sure what I'd do, but I haven't seen any professional evidence that this swale is going to kill the trees.
We'd, as a matter of fact, none of us here know. There isn't a single person in this room that knows that. And I'm asking you to find out if in fact, when you do that, and yeah, it- it would be a job pain and we're not asking you to do anything differently, but I mean, it's just, I wanted to put it in, right back in your lap. just, I wanted to put it in, right back in your lap, if this was happening to your house, I don't think you'd be concerned about how much the builder has spent to do this stuff, you'd probably be more concerned with your trees. That would be my guess. And you would do whatever you could to get it so that your trees didn't, didn't die, that they weren't killed.
Yeah, but I don't want to put Mr. Murray in a position where he's providing you with his professionals' opinion on the tree, and then have the abutter rely on that, and then have the tree die.
Well, the only way the tree's going to die is if you dig up the roots. So at some point, you're going to know the tree's going to die.
I don't know enough about trees.
Once you get down, no, but once you get down and you start digging up the roots, you know the tree's going to die. Now you can go to the abutter and say, I'm sorry, but your trees are going to die. But I'm just asking you to look at it, look at the trees, look and see how far the branches come out, look and see if they go over where the drainage ditch is going to go. Now you got a little bit of issue, maybe you can talk to the abutter and say, look, let's try to work, you know, work something out here, let's, you know, I don't want to kill your trees. And, uh, no, I just want, you know, I'm just, both of yous to be in the abutters' shoes, and if that was going to happen to you, you wouldn't care what expense it costs the, the builder to do that. Now, I don't know if it's going to happen, I have no clue whether it's going to happen or not, I have no clue how big the trees are, how far the branches go out, but, uh, um, guys could just go check it out and see if it looks like that might happen, try to work something out. Maybe you can buy the trees from them. If it costs that much to do the ditch and everything, maybe, you know, buy the trees from them or something, and, uh, happy with that, but, but, you know, we have to put ourselves in the abutters' shoes, and it, right in his house, and what would hap, what would we like? How would we like it to happen if we, if we were there, if that was us? And I know I would be livid if somebody's building something beside my house and they were going to kill my trees. Um, and I'm concerned about the beginning of this, when, you know, we're talking about th- this, this meeting, what we're talking about today could be totally a moot point if in fact that that condition was never in there. And I'm very concerned about the fact that a condition like that could end up in a decision, and it should, we, we have a big problem here, either, either it wasn't in there to begin with, and it got in there, and it shouldn't have, or the second one is it got in there, and I know that you came here with reasons why you to, you knocked down the trees, but I just know what the area looked like beforehand, what it looks like now, again, this is not an expert opinion, I think some of the trees could have been saved, but the fact of the matter is that if it wasn't a condition in there in the first place, what difference does it make? You didn't have to save any trees. If it was in there, then, you know, we're going by your opinion as to why the trees had to be knocked down. Um, no, I have no idea where I'm going with this.
Yeah, but you, you know, that condition, I agree with you, it's problematic, because even if a tree was a mature tree, and it was in the developable area, it still can be removed. So that could be part of the confusion.
Well, yeah, I mean, the condition said if it, if it had anything to do with the development, like if, if you needed to take the tree down to do pretty much anything to build the houses, whatever, you could, you could take them down, you know, and then it becomes very discretionary as to whether or not they are or they aren't. I mean, I just know that when I saw the pictures that were provided to us with the whole piece of land, with all the trees before you built, and then after the land were gone, they were just all gone. A lot of trees.
Let me, that, there's four and a half acres of land, probably at least three and a half to four was open land, it was found land years ago, I have pictures from thirty and forty years ago, it was all open land, the only trees were around the perimeter of land.
Correct, it was around the perimeter, but, but the trees around the perimeter are gone too, some of them, back to a certain...
The, 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 the scrub brush up by ninety-three, because when I built ninety-three, there ain't trees up there, and then the, 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 the left side with this well, and the right side, and the, the rest of the trees, and the front, we haven't cut any trees because there's a retention base along Dragon Court, it's fifteen feet wide, we had to put it, so that, all the ending there, and we take out for the drainage.
So I, well, I, 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 I guess we're done.
I would, uh, just say one thing is that as you approach the construction of that swell, I would be extremely careful and be very proactive in documenting any root system you encounter, and make sure your employees or subcontractor employees are quite aware of the procedures to act upon if they do encounter them, because this doesn't sound like it's going to go away that easily. Um, it is approved on the shot, on the, on the subdivision approval, so right now, you, there's not much we can say as far as stopping the work. It should have had a little bit more dialogue, like all of this entire conversation tonight, it's unfortunate it wasn't discussed further up front, avoid this. Right now, we have a series of complaints on this development, and we need to stop it from continuing immediately, because I don't think there's a board member on this, in this group tonight, or the entire board, that really wants to have to deal with abutter complaints with our developers. We like to think that the developers that work in the city acknowledge our concerns, the abutters' concerns, and they go out there and do the right thing, by the residents of the city, and, you know, make their developments good for the city and good for themselves, you know, profitable, but, you know, we have to all coexist here, and we can't just run amok, and that's a, a concern that seems to be coming out from this development, and I'd like to see it, you know, get under control sooner than later, and I think it's in everyone's best interest. I think that's where you're heading, but we, we need to make it happen. Is there any other concerns, Tina, that...
Uh, no, the last thing I just wanted to mention, uh, it's not necessarily anything, uh, for Mr. Murray to have to correct, but there have also been a couple of emails that I've received, that I provided you with copies of, uh, that mentioned issues of dust on different days, there were a couple of complaints that were formally received. Um, I provided you with a copy of those emails, you'd be aware of them. I will say two things, that, uh, the complaints that I received, the first one, uh, came in on a Friday, and I, uh, actually, um, followed a policeman who was called to the scene, and I went up after the policeman and stayed there for about forty-five minutes, and observed only, um, one complaint, it was a very windy day, and at one point, um, there was construction work on site, and a cloud of dust raised, um, but it quickly dissipated before it hit the sidewalk, it was the only one I saw in forty-five minutes. Um, and when I left, uh, the worker was, um, responded by, was spraying water on the site from a hose, and, um, the policeman had asked him to do it initially when he first arrived, and about in several hours afterward, uh, they were still at that. So, um, I observed no conditions there requiring remediation, in my opinion, and the second incident came in a couple of weeks ago, again on a Friday, when, uh, dust was, um, alleged, and there were photographs that were provided to the department, and I provided you with copies of those, so you would see them, and they're relatively small, um, but there were no conditions present in those photographs, in, in my opinion, that warranted any sort of corrective action on the part of the developer. Underscore, they know that there's a sensitivity here, uh, as they do in all projects, I'm sure, um, and I just urge them to continue to use whatever caution and care they can, um, and their site folk do, uh, to keep the dust down. Dust will always be created during construction, uh, the issue is that it can't get, um, to the point where it's bothersome and noisome, if you will, so, um, let's, let's...
Anything else that the board members would like to raise? I think we've addressed everything here tonight, obviously, it's not what we'd like to be doing down here. All we can ask is that you follow the conditions of the subdivision approval in trying to stop these concerns of the neighbors immediately, because it's not proactive to a good process. Um, we lose credibility, both the developers and the boards, when we have residents coming back to us after the fact that we're not compliant with our own rules that we set forth for both sides. So please, try and make it happen. I appreciate you coming down, I'm sure the residents are maybe a little bit dissatisfied, but we, we need to make sure we work together here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, to the chair, Tina, can you guys look into that in terms of the, uh, the minutes and the conditions that are on there, and see if we can, I think that's a, an issue that, if that condition was never really on there to begin with, and then it appeared on there, um, we just, we just not, there were other things we talked about, but the main thing that got this going was the trees, and if that was never a condition to begin with, that's a good hour and a half of my life I'll never have back.
Yeah, I will definitely look into that and, and give you the...
Because I, I've just never heard something like that happening, well, in all the times that I've been on here, but now I'm thinking, maybe it's happened, and I just don't, we just don't know about it.
It could have been if he was pressed for time, or he thought that this project was very similar to the other, but I, I will double check. I know that I had looked through the written minutes for reference and didn't find any, but I have not gone through the video, and minutes don't capture everything that's done at a meeting and said at a meeting, so there may be some references there that are worth checking. I'll relive that part.
And also, the second thing I found interesting from all this was that you are the governing body in terms of policing these, uh, projects.
Yeah, and conditions, and on, it's, next time we, um, approve a project or get close to it, um, issues like the hours of construction are things, we do have a city ordinance, um, you had chosen hours that were slightly different, but only by one hour, and if we stuck with the city ordinance, I could have sent Big Tom Quinn out, and he could be the enforcer. But yes, it is enlightening and it is interesting that it is the planning department or the planning board's responsibility for, for enforcing its own conditions, so, yeah, interesting.
And next up, we have the approval of minutes for the September twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen.
May I get a check?
Oh, I thought she left, didn't she?
No, she's not.
Well, you can have it.
and October tenth, oh, excuse me, um, approval of minutes of the September twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, twenty-four Flag Street site visit, and October ten, twenty-seventeen, and October twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, regular meetings. Yes, Jim?
Can we vote on those separately, where I was not present for the site?
Absolutely, and I believe, I know, um, for my purposes, I was not here on the October twenty-fourth meeting, so I would not be included in those.
I'm wondering if we should wait till we have... That's what I'm wondering.
...
Yeah, we did. Well, go ahead, please, I'm sorry.
A motion to accept the, uh, September twenty-seven?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six site visit minutes.
Okay, do we have second? All second. Motion by Bob, second by Claudia, to accept the September twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, twenty-four Flag Street site visit minutes, all those in favor? Four zero. One abstain and two absent.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept the September twenty-sixth, regular meeting minutes.
Um, those are not before us, we have the October tenth, oh, two thousand seventeen, which raises the issue of where the September twenty-sixth...
Yeah.
Well, I can't actually vote on the October tenth one, I was gone. Pretty sure I was...
On which one?
October tenth.
Yeah, but they're wondering where the September twenty-sixth regular meeting minutes are.
Right.
I don't have them listed.
We had them...
At the previous meeting?
We had them at the previous meeting, and we put off approving those till this meeting, so I have them ingrained in my head, and I know, I know that they're acceptable.
Probably a typo, should have said...
But if you'd like to wait, we'll just wait until the next meeting to do all, to the three of them.
I think you can approve minutes.
Okay, then I will make a motion to approve the September twenty-sixth regular meeting.
Motion to accept the twenty sec, September twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen minutes of the regular meeting.
Right.
Bye, Bob, second by...
I'm just getting them up.
Jim?
Because I don't have them in my mind. My mind carries less minutes than Bob's.
And those were in the last pack.
Yes, they were all distributed for the, at the last meeting, for the last meeting.
All right, hold on. I have the October tenth meeting.
That's what we're voting on?
No, we're voting on the...
October tenth.
No, I have the twenty-sixth.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I thought we were still on the twenty-sixth.
I'm looking still in September, yes.
I misheard you, I'm sorry.
I have this, the site visit twenty-six minutes, but that's it from the last packet, so I don't know when the...
Let's postpone, let's make sure that we've distributed, if there's any question, let's hold off.
Because it wasn't in the packet for the past meeting, so, and I wasn't, I, I don't think I was at the...
It should have been in the packet for the October tenth meeting.
Which I wouldn't have.
We tried to get them right to the next meeting, so...
All right.
There would have been several meetings back that you received them.
So we'll postpone.
Okay, so I withdraw my motion to, to approve the September twenty-sixth meeting, uh, minutes.
Okay. Motion with...
And we'll just carry them over to the, to the next meeting.
Okay.
I don't think you need a motion.
And do we need a motion to continue? No. Do we have a motion to accept the October tenth, two thousand seventeen minutes regular, of the regular meeting?
Do you have enough votes without me? Because I wasn't at the October tenth meeting, so...
Kevin, you are here.
Kevin, you are here.
So do we have a motion?
I have a motion to...
Motion by Bob to accept the October tenth, two thousand seventeen minutes, second by Kevin, all those in favor? Four zero carries, or one abstain, and one abstain, and two absent. Do we have a mo, do we have enough to vote on the October twenty-fourth? I know I was not here on October twenty-fourth. I think everybody else was present at the last meeting, I believe.
Yeah. Doherty, Bogan, Callahan, Donovan, were all present that day.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty-fourth.
I'll second that.
Motion by Claudia, second by Bob, all those in favor? Four in favor, one abstain. Next on the agenda, we have a planning board director update.
Uh, just a couple of things, it looks like we're going to have a pretty healthy-sized agenda at our next meeting, um, we continue the Federal Street Smart Growth District, we also have the Affordable Housing, um, proposed amendments to section eleven-eleven that are back on that night. Uh, two preliminary plans, uh, one for property at the Woburn Mall, and a second one that just came in this afternoon for land adjacent to East Dexter Street, I believe both of those preliminary plans have been filed in response to the fact that there's a pending zoning amendment that would up the affordable housing requirement. But those will both be on your agenda for the next meeting, along with Wall Drive, and perhaps one or two other things I'm not remembering.
Thank you. And is there any other business matters that need to be addressed?
Um, can we chat briefly about Tina's suggestion about the one business meeting?
Um, can we chat briefly about Tina's suggestion about the one business meeting and one workshop meeting? I read that, and given, given that it appears that, at least from the planning department's point of view, adding another meeting per month at the moment doesn't seem workable. As long as our business meetings don't last until, you know, eleven o'clock at night, like they used to back in the day, I think that's a great suggestion. But at some point, I guess, we would know pretty quickly whether our one business meeting per month is, is workable. I mean, people, I, I know, I, you know, my observation of my fellow board members is that everyone attempts to give their full attention to the projects discussed despite the lateness of the hour. But it is very difficult to give the same time and attention to a project at ten-thirty at night that you might have at seven-thirty at night. And so I would be sort of reluctant to do that, you know, once a month, if that's what it takes to implement that. So that's my only comment. I like the idea, um, in terms of a workshop-style meeting, maybe we could hold it in the engineering conference room and sit around a table and have audience members participate. I mean, it's a public meeting, you know, we could decide how we deal with the, the, um, best deal with public participation in that context. But, you know, so, so I guess I have two suggestions. One, you know, good idea, but not if it results in one meeting a month that's, you know, until eleven-thirty at night. And then to make it a true workshop-type environment, I would suggest holding the workshop meeting not in this room, which I don't believe is conducive to a workshop-style discussion, whereas the engineering conference room is, I think, more conducive to that. So those are my two comments on that proposal.
Any other comments from the members?
I couldn't agree anymore than to what, exactly what Claudia just said. It was like she read my notes.
Thank you. And if there are no other matters?
So if we just can reach, I mean, when would we start if we were going to try this?
Well, I was wondering if maybe January, the start fresh new year, would also give me a little bit of time. I was thinking, we do have a number of attorneys and engineers who frequently file things with us to kind of tell them that on, at least on an experimental basis, we're going to try to see if we can convert one of our regular monthly meetings to a workshop. That'll confine them to focusing their applications on one night of the month. So I'd like to give them a little bit of notice. We only have one meeting left anyway in December, and that's going to be on the twelfth after the November twenty-eighth. So it would seem that maybe with the January meeting, I don't have a preference to first meeting or second, but that might make the most sense.
Yes.
Um, and we were going to, I mean, it came up with this, uh, affordable housing, um, proposal that came up, which is, which is out there now.
There's some big topics, the affordable housing, our housing production plan.
But that, but the affordable housing has already been presented to us as a, as, so that would be something that would be, I would think, attacked right away. Because it's already on the table.
Well, yeah, unless you, you, you may very well make a recommendation on that at your next meeting or at the December meeting. It may be that you're able to make a recommendation on her, the four specific amendments that Alderman Campbell's advancing, but that still leaves dozens of recommendations in the housing production plan. Leaves maybe open questions from the four issues we're considering now as part of Alderman Campbell's proposal. The subdivision rules and regs are really high up there on my priorities, a couple of other housekeeping things. So be a matter of making priorities for our workshop and what the board would, what's most pressing. It seems like everything's depressing. It's all very important.
Okay. Thank you. And if there are no other matters, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I would make a motion to adjourn at nine seventeen. Motion to adjourn by Claudia, second by Bob. All those in favor?
Five zero. Thank you.